All right, well, let's call them into order. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Let's say Mr. Mayor, I have to correct the time.
We still did the pledge.
Yes.
The Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any motions to adopt? Tom. Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Bryce, so in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One second, we have to correct the video, it should be sawing the council chambers, and as much as we want to look at Gene, we needed to have to show the council chambers.
Probably.
Okay, if you hover over the council, that's all of the three dots, and click pin, I think that's how you do it. Here we go again.
There we go.
Talking about the state. Actually, we don't use Zoom very often.
Don't get us started on this Zoom.
Thank you for your patience, Gene.
Uh, we have no, oh, did you need to read the disclaimer?
Yep, yep. So, uh, the city council, this is our first meeting, uh, where we are conducting it in a hybrid environment, meaning that people can either attend in person, or they can also view in real time and participate online through the Zoom virtual meeting application. Uh, council will note that we will now be putting, posting the link on top of the agenda, so if somebody goes to the agenda and there's something they want to see, they can use that link then to participate in the meetings. Um, now, I'm looking out, and the only virtual participant we have tonight is Gene, and he's old school on this, he's done this a bunch of times. So, uh, going through, if you're online, Gene, and you want to participate, you simply go down to the bottom of your screen where it says reactions, you click on that button, and hit the raise hand button, and so if there's an item where the mayor's calling for public comment when he asks about participation from the virtual audience, you would simply need to raise your hand at that time. Do you have any other questions related to participation, Gene? Okay, we'll, we'll.
I guess I got unmuted. No, I was, you answered my question.
Okay.
I didn't know how to raise my hand, I didn't remember. I didn't remember where to click.
And you can always do a little bit of this, too, just put your hands, there we go.
Give me this?
Yep.
All right.
I can say I'm back. I'm gonna go back unmute.
All right, we have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements, so we'll open up the public comment. Anyone, Commissioner?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members, everybody. Tom Wolfe, Scott County Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry I missed the meeting on Tuesday night. Sounds like fun. Uh, anyhow, we have, uh, taken care of our levy, not quite yet, but we're looking at 6.5 instead of 7.4 percent, uh, which will bring some, most people's taxes down a little bit. On the county portion, I did get a few calls and emails, uh, some properties and assessments did go up a lot, and that's, you know, that's, the property values and the sales in those areas were substantiated that, so, February 9th, 2023, at 7:30, you guys are slated to, you know, some of you to come in at our I-35 Solutions meeting and, hopefully make a nice presentation about the, uh, bridge and why we should fix that. And, uh, next year, um, I am, so far they have picked me to be the chair next year of the county board, so.
All right.
Well, we do a rotation, it's actually a good thing to do a rotation, so anyhow. A lot of counties don't do rotations, and it, um, I don't know that that's, uh, that's good, so, becomes popularity contest and trading and, uh, it's no good, so, that's all I have, so, unless you have questions. But I will be on the 15th, so.
Yeah, and there's a link, I think, we can send you, or a path at least, to view the video if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's five hours long, so.
So, and I can't sleep.
This won't help you sleep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So.
Gene, I think I saw that you had your hand raised.
Yes, I do, do you hear me?
We do, go ahead.
Oh, good. Uh, if you want to hear this, this pertains to your, uh, update on your water appropriation permit with the DNR. I have some information you may or not be aware of. Anyway, did you know there's a law that's not gonna allow the DNR to update your, uh, request? And I could quote that law if you want me to.
Um, Andrea, or is anyone aware of this?
Our, our application's currently in the process of being reviewed, and they have not as yet made any indication that there was a legal barrier to the request. I suppose if it is out there, it will come up through the process.
Oh, good, I was gonna suggest you apply for this sooner than later, and I see this issue coming up because it says you cannot sell water a million gallons or more and ship it over 100 miles, that's actually state law.
Interesting.
And this isn't an old law, this law was passed because of the Dakota Water Train Proposal of 2019, and this restricts the appropriation of water out of the state of Minnesota. And, yeah, a lot of people aren't aware of this.
Is that something we?
Anyway, that's all I got to say.
I appreciate it, Gene, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't realize you already put in your application for the permit, I thought you were still waiting.
Sure, sure.
And I seen this when I was reading your last meeting minutes, otherwise I wasn't aware of you were gonna even apply for an increase in water allotment.
No, it's a, it's a good point, Gene, thank you for making us aware of it.
Thanks, Gene, is this?
Yeah.
Something that, uh, staff could maybe look into a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on to speak for public comment?
I am looking at the virtual participation mayor, and the only, um, non-city person is, uh, Gene at the moment, so.
I saw someone a second ago.
There was, but they've dropped off, yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Uh, on the consent agenda, does anyone have any items they would like pulled, or quick questions on consent? If not, want to entertain a motion? So moved. Motion by Josh.
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent passes. We do have a public hearing tonight for the truth in taxation. Tom, I'll turn it to you.
Yep, thank you.
Go through the whole thing?
Um, I'm gonna ask really quickly, um, is there anybody on the call or in the room who would like to see the entire, um, truth in taxation presentation, it's a mere 50 slides?
I'm hearing.
I would, but I would need to, so.
Yeah, you, you don't.
All right, so, um.
I think we're good.
Yeah, so, we, we would just at this time, uh, really be, uh, going through there we go. The, for the council's purposes, the draft budget, so I will zip through all of the background slides. And so for council benefit, as councils are aware, um, we go through, uh, a lengthy process which starts in May of every year to develop our budget. Both the portions of the budget which are affected by general property taxes, as well as the utility fund portions of the budget, as we go through that process, um, we have a number of assumptions, uh, and that the council has reviewed and approved, which are modified as we continue to move through the budget uh, process, which is a night, which is several months. Also making corrections as we go for new information that comes up over the course of that process. Um, where we are tonight is we have what we would present as the final draft of the budget, that's subject to any directed changes from the council, we would present at the December 15th meeting for adoption by the city council. So for the council's reference, when we talk about tax impact, uh, we talk about levy as well, but tax impact is the actual amount that a taxpayer is paying, and we talk about tax impact, 1% up or down. Um, we're talking about the change in the tax payment for the city portion of the taxes for the typical home. For the upcoming budget year, that's estimated to be $13 to $14 for a 1% change in the taxes for the typical home, and when you talk, equate that out to the levy, that's a mere $22,000 um, to, for that 1% change. Again, we've, we've looked at it, and we know that the CPI from the first half of 2021, '22, too, is 8%, that's just a reference. So as we move forward, uh, we know that our property taxes, um, from a revenue standpoint, our city's primarily supported by property taxes, uh, 70-plus percent, that's pretty typical, um, and is pretty consistent for us as a community historically. When we look where we spend those dollars, we know that Linda, can you move my face?
We've all asked that at one time.
I don't know, ask, um.
I'm gonna go here, so it works a little bit better. So, we know that roughly 44% is public safety, and when we talk public safety, we're talking police, fire, building inspections, and, um, civil, like civil sirens and things like that. General government can best be described as city hall, um, not including those functions, is less than 20% of our expenditures. And then when we look at the more public works-related items, uh, streets and highways is 11%. Um, culture and recreation, basically Parks and Recreation, that's another 6%. Um, equipment certificates and debt, that support is about 4.3%. Um, and so on. If we look at the levy, um, from the change from the 2022 adopted budget to the preliminary budget, which was adopted by the council at the end of September, uh, we are looking at a, an increase of 23% which are just mostly in bonded debt. The overall increase is 10, but you'll notice that the greatest increase is in the bonded debt section. And as we've talked about, and we'll talk about in our conclusions, the biggest driver in changes in the city's budget is the addition of additional staff, which has been primarily been police officers in recent years. Um, and, uh, debt associated with capital projects and capital purchases. The final draft, after we've gone through modified assumptions, updated assumptions related to, um, trend data, related to, for example, energy-related costs, we're basically looking at roughly the same overall change, although there have been some tweaks within individual areas of the levy. You'll notice that bonded debt, obviously that's fixed, is still at 23%. You'll notice that there's been a slight increase in the general fund portion of the levy, you'll notice that there's been an increase in capital outlay. Um, but you'll notice that there's also been a decrease on the fire fund piece as well. The actual levy itself, um, you will note is literally only a hundred dollars less at this point than the preliminary levy that was adopted. It was our goal, um, earlier in the season to be able to have some positive things fall our way with regards to those assumptions, and we really didn't. The, some of the biggest drivers since the adoption of the preliminary levy have been the increasing energy costs, and we've had to make some significant adjustments for that for the upcoming year from what our original projections were. Um, we also have to, uh, note, uh, the COLA adjustments based on our current market group was also a factor, and we were kind of hoping for a positive windfall with regards to insurance renewals, and we found out that it actually came in right where, almost exactly where we had projected. Um, where in some past years, we've, um, it's rarely gone over, but sometimes we come in a little more positive because we usually feel that estimate is conservative, meaning on the long side, and it turned out being right on. When we go on and we take a look at adopted levies over time, you see that there is a trend of growth in the final levies as we've adopted them over time, as the city has grown, as we've added, you know, we add staff, we add streets, there are costs to running the city overall, um, but when we take a look at, and in my earlier portion of the presentation, you will note that when we look at where we are with regards to actual tax impact, our spending per capita has tech, actually gone down over time and leveled off as the population of our community has grown, and that we've actually held the impact to the typical home relatively level for about a decade through the early teens, but in the last five years, as we're reaching a point in our community where we're having to start to do road repairs and replace equip, major pieces of equipment, so those capital purchases and those capital projects, um, and we're taking on that debt, we've also seen the levy as well as the tax impact increase incrementally as well. So, as you know, we use the what-if or the estimated tax impact tool that's provided by, uh, Scott County. This is a great tool, um, not every county does this for their cities, but allows us to take a look at what relative impacts would be for particular levies when we're going through the process, so we can take a look at what the impact is for the typical home. And then we can also get an idea of what the order of magnitude of impact might be for homes that are appreciating at a greater rate or lesser rate than that typical home within the community. So if we take a closer look at that, the typical home, um, in our community, uh, if we're taking a look at the average appreciation and value, um, is going to be looking at, which only represents, and that is a 24 to 27% appreciation, is gonna be looking at about a $139 increase, assuming that their starting average market value was $311,000. That type of an increase in the appreciation is fairly substantial. And the way this works is if everybody moves up the same and everybody moves down the same, the valuation would be neutral, but the reality is that relative to what we might increase the levy. However, the reality is there are people who have homes that appreciate at a rate greater than the average and below the average, and that shifts the tax burden. If your home appreciates greater than the average, you're going to pick up a greater portion of the tax burden. If your home appreciates less than the average or depreciates, it's going to be able to shift some of its burden to somebody else. And so when you look through, for example, homes, and I just talked to two residents just earlier today that indicated that their valuations had increased 50% in this 53.57% range, they're gonna be looking at something that could be as high as $400 increase in their taxes, and that's very consistent with one of the residents that I talked to. However, on the other side, you'll note that there are hundreds of homes within the community, actually, uh, almost 43% of the community that actually saw an appreciation that was less than the average and actually one that saw depreciation. And they're gonna see increases much less or actually decreases in their taxes as that tax burden has shifted based on how people's values are performing relative to the rest of the market. That's where we were with the preliminary budget. As we look at the draft budget, the final draft, we're looking at a similar, at the same tax impact as we mentioned earlier, the levy's only about a hundred dollars different than what the preliminary budget, so all these numbers are gonna be very, very, very close to what the preliminary. What that means is for our residents, the dollar amount that they saw on their proposed tax statement is gonna be very close to what their actual taxes are. As we know from past years, sometimes we have the ability to reduce the levy from the preliminary levy, sometimes substantially, and what people are actually taxed isn't necessarily what was on their proposed, it's usually a little lower. This year, that is not going to be, I think, the case, unless the council's going to be looking at making substantial changes to the budget as it's been previously presented. One of the things I know we often take a look at is budgeted contingency that we have within the budget. Um, the budget that's been presented to the council in their packet, and the tax impact that we're talking about here and the levy that we're talking about, um, is reflective of a 1.3% contingency within the budget. Um, and that's usually an area where we might have a higher contingency by the time we get to this point in the budget process, and it allows us to reduce it down to that 1 to 1.5% that we typically like to carry, and so that will help with it. At this point in time, staff is recommending it at the 1.3, we would normally recommend a 1%, but given the volatility and a lot of the unknowns with regards to operational costs, we're recommending keeping it at the 1.3, which is the maximum the budget will accommodate at this point in time unless we cut something else.
Even if we were to cut the 1.3, what would that equate to? If we just wipe it out?
1.5%? Because it's 22, $22,000 roughly for every 1% tax impact, so for a 9.7, if we, if we take out that roughly, how many thousand dollars is it?
I think it was actually under the 1% where we left off, once we finally did all the.
That's true, it's less than a 1% reduction in the tax impact.
I can go grab the exact one if you want.
No, I was just curious, it's minimal.
Just, and that was our logic, is we're saying, okay, what if we wiped it out completely, is there substantial savings, so to speak? And what we found is, relatively speaking, relative to the rest of the tax impact, it was limited versus having a contingency at all. And we have to remember that in a subsequent year, if we want to maintain that contingency, we have to buy it back in a future budget year, so. Um, to reduce that future tax impact, it's either you pay it now or you pay it later, so.
Have we ever needed it since I've been on council?
Um, we have not gone into the contingency, doesn't mean those dollars are lost. What we typically do is if we come in under budget, and we have, typically every year, we take any excess dollars and we sweep those dollars into typically our capital projects fund, which helps pay for debt service, and that buys down then the debt service levy in future years. So it, if it doesn't benefit our, it, so it benefits our taxpayers then in future years. Um, with regards to the property, final property tax statement, this is more of, uh, for anybody that would be here for the truth in taxation. We do have to keep in mind that like, for instance, in 2021, our portion of the overall tax statements, roughly a third, and that does fluctuate between 30 and 40%, but typically we represent roughly a third of the overall property tax bill. School districts, the county, other special taxing districts such as the Met Council, mosquito control, Scott County CDA, and watersheds make up the rest, the other two-thirds of the, the property tax bill. So it was our intent this evening, um, to actually combine the, both the TNT presentation, but also to get direction from the council with regards to the overall draft budget. And since there's nobody in the room currently, uh, who appears to be asking any questions, is there anybody online that had questions with regards to the budget? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so, does council have any questions for staff?
No questions, any concerns or any changes, or are we okay with the draft budget as is?
Okay, so that will be on, is planned to be then on the consent agenda on the 15th.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Do we need to have, open a public hearing and then close it, or?
Um, yes, you should open the public hearing.
All right, we can go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:23. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:24. And I guess that's it, then we'll move on to general business.
Uh, we have two items under general business tonight, Mr. Mayor, the first one is the annual renewal, um, and applications for premise gambling permits, so pull tabs and other similar games, um, which are applied for by local nonprofit organizations, uh, eligible organizations allowed to provide for gambling. We have two separate resolutions because one of the, uh, locations, um, is owned by one of our council members, and so as a result, they have to abstain. Unfortunately, they were ill and not here this evening, but we did originally prepare these two separate resolutions.
Okay. Can we adopt them both with one motion?
You could.
Motion to adopt resolution 22-73 and 22-74.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Then we have the transient merchants license fee.
So, we do have a request, um, from the Knights of Columbus to waive the fee for their transient merchant license that they have obtained for purposes of selling the Christmas trees. The city does have a history of waiving fees for local nonprofit organizations um, because of the good that they do and the fact that a lot of the, the, they're typically associated with fundraisers and those dollars, at least a portion of them typically come back into the community. Uh, the council had, in 2014, had passed a resolution related to outdoor concerts and events, on policy waiving fees for those organizations at that time, and then more recently, the council had waived the fee for transient merchant license for the Boy Scouts for fundraiser they're doing in conjunction with Fire Rescue Days. Given the similarity of the nature of the events with the Boy Scout one that was waived early in the year, the Knights of Columbus are requesting a waiver for their current transient merchant license in connection with, and, and the license itself is approved administratively, so this is just a request for the waiver of the fee.
Okay. That's I'm okay with waiving it.
Me too.
Motion to adopt resolution 22-75.
Second. Motion by Amanda, second by Josh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Tom, uh, reports, so. Administration.
Um, I don't have any specific reports.
Okay. Anything to be passed on from public works?
Uh, we had our first round of interviews today for the public works position. Council be aware, this is the third time that we've gone out for the position. This is actually, even though it was small, as is true with every city for every position, it may be one of the strongest pools that we've had in a number of, you know, a number of years. We had a really solid group of candidates, we did have one clear top candidate, though, that we will be asking to move on in the process. But the, um, good thing is that if for whatever reason, uh, that candidate does not pan out or they withdraw, there are additional candidates in the pool that we would move on, that we would feel comfortable moving on to.
Okay. Good news. Police.
My report will be just a little bit longer because I don't want to take up any time at the next meeting, which is gonna be very long, so there's kind of a lot of news. Um, one, Officer Steve Latteling has finished his work with us and is no longer an employee. Um, I've spoken with him, and he's very receptive to coming in January and receiving a, uh, certificate of appreciation for his time here, um, so it'll be that January 12th meeting. And then we're hoping to have Officer Derek Erwin as well, um, pending his wife, who's gonna be giving birth later this month, can make it too, so we might do both on the same day. Community engagement, uh, presented to third grade class at Eagleview about being an investigator. They had a mystery and investigation, uh, program that they had finished and, uh, culminated in my speaking with them and talking about my time as a detective and investigator, solving cases. It was a great opportunity for 45 minutes to talk to the whole third grade class, which has a lot of energy. A lot of questions and great questions, so.
It was more fun with that, you or them?
Uh, I'd like to say it's equal, because I knew you enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun. Uh, we had our coffee with the cop program that we haven't had since the pandemic at Firefly. Uh, myself, Sergeant Bell, and Officer Gares were able to interact and hang out and talk to over 20 other customers. Um, I was making drinks and stuff like that for them, and apparently they all tasted fine, so it was great engagement.
Had I known you were making the drinks.
They gave me a tutorial real quick, and then I was making them, smoothies, coffees, stuff like that. Uh, I got a chance, I'm not sure if he's still on, but Gene. Uh, got a chance, I'm not sure if he's still on, but Gene was there as well, it was very nice. Uh, had a lot of questions, people came there specifically for that, just to chit chat with us, so it was awesome. We did something new, we did it Thanksgiving Eve Eve, so we knew some people would more likely be off, so we did it during the week, during the day, and had a great turnout. Our next one's January fourteenth, which is a Saturday, which is a lot busier there, so we'll be doing the same thing then, and then try to keep them more regular. Like to thank Firefly, they provided uh regular brew coffee and um cookies for the people that came, which was really nice, so. It was a great event. Um, couple of accomplishments for me. I started uh my emergency management certificate program right at the start of the pandemic and which was shut down. It normally takes a year, year and a half to complete, but I finally completed it. Um, that's been done with timing and everything. Uh, so I'll receive that at the state's emergency management uh conference in February, but I officially, I already have the certificate, so now I'm official.
Congrats.
That it's in my title, which is great. And then another accomplishment for me back in twenty-eighteen, before I started here, um, I started the FBI LIDA program, which is Law Enforcement Executive Development Association. And that um is an offshoot of the FBI's Quantico Leadership uh Program. And that one, you have to go to Quantico for ten weeks, and uh then you get their certificate. So this is meant for smaller um agencies that can't afford to send somebody there. So it's a three-week program with three distinct weeks over, you can take it over a year, for me it took four years. Um, but uh I, when you complete all three, you get what's called the Trilogy Award. So uh supervisor leadership, command staff leadership, and executive leadership. So I have finished that, um, which is really great to get off my plate, and it's a wonderful program. Um, I hope to, I think budget-wise, we're going to try to get Sergeant Bell started in the program next year. Um, he is attending Cleone Command, which is put on by the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association in January, up in Camp Ripley for a week. Uh, it's a very good course, I started that right after, or I completed that right after I started here as well. Um, hiring. Uh, we received five candidates for the police officer position. Um, strong on experience, um, I can say a lot of the candidates were. Next week is our first interview process where we're gonna be interviewing, we don't know how many, um, because there was some applications that have to come back before tomorrow, before we know how many are going to be scheduled. So we know for sure we're going to be interviewing one. Um, we're hoping to get a good candidate out of it. If not, we're going to be rotating to the as-filled, um, meaning we'll just keep an open application, and as the applications come in, we'll schedule interviews and go that route. If we find somebody, then they'll proceed through.
Can I stop just a second? All applications have been completed and five have been scheduled.
Okay.
So, just an update, sorry.
They had until tomorrow, so everybody got on it, thank you, I did not know that. So we'll be interviewing all five next week. Um, Tom, uh, Officer Gares, Sergeant Bell will be on the panel for the first interview, and we'll see who goes through.
So it has been our practice that we do include one council member to represent the general community on the second round of interviews. Um, because we won't have a council meeting, uh, may not have a council meeting before that next round of interviews, it would be nice if we could have that person identified tonight.
I'm happy to do it if, unless someone else wants to.
The interview is on the, second interview's on the sixteenth. We don't have the times yet, does that, is that a conflict?
The sixteenth of December?
Yes. So.
I'm out.
It's the day after the fifteenth meeting.
Yep.
I'd do it.
You want it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Bryce, we appreciate, especially with your experience in the field and everything, you got a great eye for that.
Sure.
And then uh I am open if anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you, sorry it's a little longer.
Uh, engineering?
Uh, I'll field any questions. Otherwise, I have no report.
Thanks, Rich. Uh, community development?
Um, the only thing I have to say is I think our planning commission did a good job on a very difficult meeting.
Quick trip is digging and making a lot of progress, too.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Habanal.
Uh, I think I saw there were draft minutes from the Parks Committee, is there anything else to add for Parks?
Um, just advising the council that I was given a verbal resignation from Jessica Davidson, our uh Parks and Recreation Specialist. Um, she is resigning uh basically because of her, it's a part-time job for her, and the other portions of her life have grown to not be able to, in her mind, be able to fill the position at the level that she would like to be able to and to meet our expectations for hours. So, um, she just gave me an, an, a verbal, we're working through the details of the more formalities, but she's indicated that it would be her intent to try and give us what hours she can for as long as she can to help ease us through the transition period. I will be back at the next city council meeting to have a discussion about replacing that vacancy. Um, so, just a heads up.
Okay. Um, CCEC, I know there's also minutes on the, in the packet, anything more to add?
Tree lighting is on Saturday here from six to seven, the actual lighting of the tree is at six fifteen.
Okay.
It has been posted if there, if all council members want to attend, so.
I'll be there. All right. Uh, other reports, um, scale, there is, Scale Exec got canceled for tomorrow, but next week, uh, next Friday, Elko New Market update, we're the poll's starting, right?
I have had a request um regarding that, usually that, I wanted to check with the council on that tonight. Um, that usually involves a presentation typically from the mayor or senior staff person about the community and the things that are going on. I'll be perfectly blunt, we don't have the bandwidth to prepare for that.
Okay.
So I was, if it's okay with the council, I was going to ask them to have an alternate host.
Sounds good to me, anyone object to that?
No.
Okay.
What in the world do we have going on?
Anything for service delivery?
We have the tree lighting on Saturday.
We're still no, still no service delivery meeting?
Um, service delivery, uh, last meeting was a discussion related to housing and housing needs within the community. I think it's the first of a couple of different discussions. But it was the Live, Learn, Earn Housing Committee coming to uh the service delivery people who are, you know, head people of operational aspects of the cities within the county, and asking where they view the needs were and the most effective means of possibly addressing it. And where the conversation ended was that when we looked at where the most acute needs were and where some of the most effective work has been done, it's been with the CDA. And so the initial discussion is let's look, let's look at the tools that we have that are providing the greatest amounts in the areas of greatest need, that we actually have means to do something about. And I think that's where the focus is going to be immediately. Um, I think there will be future discussions, but that was the general result of the first meeting. The discussion, as you can imagine, ranged far and wide, but that's where we reached some consensus.
Okay. Uh, I thirty-five?
Uh, we don't have a meeting until next month.
Okay. On to discussion by council. I do have something, but uh, anyone else have anything? All right, o- only thing I wanted to just, I just wanted to briefly touch on the upcoming public hearing that we're going to have on the fifteenth, and before saying anything like that, city staff and the planning commission did a terrific job. That was not an easy meeting to be part of. Um, it was a tough room, and I think the presentations, from what I saw, I haven't been able to watch, re-watch the whole meeting, but uh I think you guys did a great job, and the planning commission should be proud of themselves, too, so. Um, as far as just the format of the meeting, you know, I plan to, at the very front end, um, try and set an expectation that everyone's going to be professional, um, council, obviously, and city staff, but.
What do you say?
I wasn't looking at you. I might have been thinking about you. But, and I have every intent of holding um people accountable or just really sticking to that. Um, although, like with other public hearings we've had, I do want to make, I do want to do something a little different than what the planning commission did. When the, when questions are asked, I don't like the kind of awkwardness of, let's wait and record all the questions and address them all at the end, I want to address them all right away. I do think that could help the meeting flow a little bit better, and some people that may come up to the podium may not because they might have their question already answered. Um, you know, I, I always love it when we as a council engage, not just me, but everybody. Um, given that it could be a big room, if you don't mind, just kind of look into me first, and I'll just kind of give a nod or something like that, I do want to make sure that we control the atmosphere as much as we can, so. That's all I had to say on that, unless anyone else has different ideas or different thoughts.
Sit back and I smirk, I'm going to watch you just manage it all.
I know, it's going to be great. I'm, I really am looking forward to it, I mean, for the most part, I was really proud to see so many people so passionate, and so. Um, I, excited is the wrong word because it has a positive tone to it, and it wasn't necessarily a positive tone, but I don't know, for a small community like us to have, I think the count was seventy people or something like that, I thought that was, I thought that was impressive and I was proud of our community, so, um, we'll just keep moving forward.
And it, it made me think of something, too, so is it appropriate? And I know when, when they're, when they come up to talk and they give their address, can we fill in the blank of the last section, too, like new market township, Elko New Market, so we can understand? I mean, I think a lot of us know if they say streets and stuff like that, where, that they're in city limits or outside of city limits, not that I want to, um, yeah, but in my brain, and I was, I brought my oldest son here to the, the planning commission meeting the other night, and I was just trying to explain to him the process and uh kind of who we represent. And while we represent the broader community, we truly represent Elko New Market residents. So I just am trying to gauge, you know, when people are giving their opinion and their perspective for or against, that it'd be nice to know if they're actual city residents or not, and then.
I'll try and drill that down when they, with the first one, when they do that. I had checked with Andrea previously, I mean, we do, we can't discriminate, we have to let everyone talk, but. Um, but yeah, I think having them actually complete the addresses is reasonable. And just flick a rubber band at me or something, if I forgot.
Can do.
Hit Amanda first.
You can go and then buy a bag of rubber bands.
All right, any other discussion by council? Otherwise motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Bryce?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.